I hope I probably turn him on as speaker. Welcome, everyone. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Bangor City Council. Today is September 22nd. It is 7:00 PM. And as usual, we start off every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask city assessor Phil.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Phil. So this is a portion of the meeting set aside for general public comment related to city business that doesn't appear on the evening's agenda. Public comment, whether in person or via Zoom, requires a person to state their name and whether they're a resident of Bangor. The city council has adopted a public comment policy that we adhere to that governs topics. Comments considered out of order or offensive or confidential. And a limit of 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, with the ability of the chair at the conclusion to add additional time. The public comment period for us city council members is to listen, not to respond or debate with persons during the public comment period. If you do not live in Bangor or own a property in Bangor, please allow those who do to have the opportunity to speak first. If you'd like to offer comment on any item related to city business not appearing on the regular agenda, you may approach the podium. On Zoom, the public can be recognized to speak by utilizing the hand raise function or on the phone by pressing star nine. We'll limit any comments to three minutes, as we have been doing for the last couple of years. With that, I will open it up.
Hillary Simmons, resident of Bangor. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow residents and honorable council members, I rise today to address an issue that may seem small at first glance, but carries weight when it comes to trust, respect, and accountability in our community. That issue is the use of cell phones by counselors during official council meetings. When the public enters the chamber, they expect focus. They expect that every word spoken, every decision made, every vote cast is being given the full attention of those elected to serve. A council meeting is not just about, is not just another gathering. It is the person, is people's business conducted in people's house. Yet, too often, eyes drift downward, screens light up, and thumbs begin to tap. That message this sends, whether intentional or not, is one of distraction and divided priorities. If a resident or taxpayer is addressing this council, pouring their heart into a concern about safety, housing, or taxes, and sees a counselor scrolling on their phone, it can feel like their voice is being ignored. That damages trust. Now, I am not naive to technology as a part of our lives. And in certain moments, a phone can be helpful tool for quick reference, communication, or clarification. But is, but there is a difference between using a device for council business and using it for personal distraction. The public knows the difference, too. The solution is not to ban technology outright, but to exercise discipline and respect. When counselors are in session, priority must be the agenda before them, not the notifications buzzing in their pocket. By modeling focus, we show residents that their concerns matter more than that text, an email, or a social media feed. In closing, I ask this council to reflect. How do we want to be seen by those we serve? As leaders fully engaged in the matter at hand or as individuals too distracted to give them the attention they deserve? The answer, I believe, is clear. Let you keep your eyes where they belong, on the people, on the issues, and on the future of this community. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Hi there, my name is Chris. I'm a homeowner, resident of city Bangor.
Chris, your last name?
Hendricks. Thank you, sorry about that. Kind of a strange one, I'll try to be brief. Love the city, bought a house here. My wife and I like to go to the subway on Stillwater, 570 Stillwater Avenue, right down the street. We went there in June, and the temperature had to be almost 100 degrees inside. We asked the employees what's going on. They had all these broken portable ACs. They said they haven't fixed it for months, and they're probably not going to. So hadn't been back in a few months. About three days ago, went in there with my wife after work to buy some Subway sandwiches. And again, it was really hot, and we talked to the employees, and they said they have no plan to fix that and told us to layer up for winter because there won't be any heat in here either. So I figured I would just mention to the city council that maybe there is somebody, somewhere, some ordinance buried somewhere that says, yeah, it's your business, and they don't have to work there, but you have to provide heat if you have a business in the city. These are young people working there. I felt bad for them. I don't assume that they get paid too much, and I really don't think that's fair. And apparently, one of the employees told me that they haven't had the correct heat or AC for two years, and quote, "The owner told them, I had a heating system, but I couldn't pay for it, and they took it away." So maybe somewhere, somebody with some sway. It's the Subway sandwich shop on 570 Stillwater Avenue in Bangor. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Cartier, I'm a resident of Bangor. I want to speak about the recent events with Charlie Kirk. But I'm not here to point fingers at anyone. I'm not here to accuse anyone's sexual orientation or race or anything like that. I'm here to speak about peace, because peace is what threatens power. And we've seen many influencers in the past. I know some in this room are old enough to remember when Martin Luther King was assassinated or when JFK was assassinated. And they were killed to stop a movement. They were poking holes in the system. And that ended abruptly, just like Charlie Kirk's life. Their words were working. But if debate dies through suppression or violent repression, society finds itself in a death trap. Social media gives you the extremes of the other side. It's clickbait, the horror movie version of the truth. And we all want safe kids, safer families, roofs that don't leak, honesty from our public servants. But corruption is a bipartisan issue. You have more in common with someone from the other party than you do with the unelected elites that control all of the media that we consume. We need to turn it off. We need to know your neighbor. We need to embrace our differences, Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, Greens, no-name parties. Let's unenroll from all of them and join together as we, the people. Because violence is not politics. Please don't take the bait. Stop being a pawn in their game. I pray that we choose to love our neighbor as thyself. Let's break this cycle and quit feeding the chaos. Be the peace that threatens power. Do not let anything digital dictate how you feel about your neighbor. Do not let the propaganda dictate who you hate. I want to close with a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. He said, "The ultimate weakness of violence is that the descending spiral beginning the very thing that it seeks to destroy. Instead of diminishing evil, it multiplies it. Through violence, you may murder the liar, but you cannot murder the lie, nor establish the truth. Through violence, you may murder the hater, but you do not murder the hate. In fact, violence merely increases the hate. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. I love you, Bangor. Thank you all."
Thank you for that quote.
Joe Lawler, Hamden. On September 14th, I was made aware of a neo-Nazi propaganda group going throughout our downtown and distributing stickers and flyers and whatnot. This is on Reddit. Two members of one group called Patriot Front canvassing for new members, mostly just to spread their message and add to their numbers. I and several others took it upon ourselves to go downtown and confront this group ourselves, remove the propaganda, and remove them. So since then, I've worked with the Bangor PD, Bangor Daily, Maine People's Alliance, Street Plus, Baldacci's office, and other nonprofit and for-profit groups to combat this issue. Also connected with dozens of other like-minded people to meet independently to try and come up with solutions. Why it matters? The economic impact is obvious. My post had 125,000 likes. Combined with the original posts, it's over half a million, thousands of comments, thousands of shares. People do not visit Bangor to be confronted with ignorant hate posted on walls. People do not want to start businesses. People do not want to visit. Tours will not come back because of this. So what I found even more interesting than these few individuals, because I understand there's always going to be pockets of ignorant human beings on earth, were that in the thousands of comments I received, not looking at the threats I received, but the thousands of other little comments, 8% disliked. And if you guys want to form a task force or some sort of subcommittee, I'm happy to do the data mining. It's my profession. I would enjoy working with your team to better understand these disaffected adults, young adults, by the way, 16 to 22, high gun ownership, high distrust in authority, high disillusion in their ability to make change and that their vote matters. They are angry, and they have very much a sick porn fixation. And that's from maybe an hour or two of my work looking into it. Today, I've just presented a problem. I've given the council my opinion and why this situation deserves attention. I've taken a lot of flak this week. That's your job, to take the ball and run with it. Use me as an asset. I don't work much anymore. I got to retire mostly two years ago. Moved back to my home state, and I was hoping for peace to raise my children in. Now I'm worried about mentioning children in public. Because they know where I am, they know my name, and now they're attacking me. That's great, little buzzer. So yeah, that's just my, my two cents. And I will linger after this meeting if anyone would like to approach me. My services are free, and I will give them as long as they are used.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Item number 25279.
Can I just have you state your name and?
First time I've been on this, this side. Jeff Davis, Director of Engineering.
Thank you.
So on the consent agenda, there's an item for an easement for Bangor Main 1 LLC, which is Gilman Road. At the last infrastructure meeting, it was asked for me to reach out to the landowner to see if they'd like to discontinue that portion of right-of-way at the end. And I just heard them, I heard back this afternoon saying that they'd like to move forward with that. So I think I'm asking for the council to take the consent, and then we would ask for a definite indefinite postponement for that item, I believe.
Great, and that's order 25279?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Sorry about that.
No, that's great. Appreciate it. Any other, I'll, I'll do one more public comment if there's anyone here. If not, I will close the public hearing. Consent agenda.
Chair.
Yes.
There would need to be a request from a member of the council to remove the item from the consent agenda. It does not need a second or anything.
At the, at the beginning or the end? I would make the motion to remove 25-279 from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Should we put a date on it?
Oh, it's going to come up tonight, and I'm going to do it.
Thank you, all right, all right.
Minutes of Bangor City Council meetings of September 8th, 2025, and September 15th, 2025, Government Operations Committee meetings of July 21st, 2025, and August 4th, 2025, and Finance Committee meeting of September 15th, 2025. 25-272 Order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 194 Warren Street. 25-273 Order authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department to partner with the Bangor Rotary to improve and install signage along the Kanduska Extreme Trail. 25-274 Order authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with licensed clinical social worker Karen Gardner to provide clinical oversight for the HIV-intensive case manager program. 25-275 Order authorizing the city manager to execute a support nation agreement with the owners of 21 Eaton Place and First National Bank. 25-276 Order authorizing the city manager to apply for a co-foundation grant in the amount of $243,225 to support a community paramedicine program. 25-277 Order authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant through the state of Maine not to exceed $400,000 to support housing stability services. 25-278 Order authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Bangor and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME Local 926, Council 93, representing airport operations. 25-280 Order authorizing the city manager to accept a donation of 18 trees from Bangor Beautiful.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second? Questions, comments? Seeing none, consent agenda has passage. Referrals to committee and first reading.
25-281 Resolve, accepting and appropriating up to $730,000 in grant funds for Maine Department of Health and Human Services for the purpose of funding Bangor Public Health and Community Services infrastructure needs. First reading.
Happy to get a roll, thank you. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, referrals and first committee, excuse me, referrals to committee and first reading has passage. Unfinished business.
25-264 Order authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with SJ Services doing business as Star Janitorial and Integrated Services as custodial service provider for Bangor International Airport, City Hall, and Public Health and Community Services Facilities. Counselor Dean.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This order would authorize the city manager to execute a contract with SJ Services doing business as Star Janitorial and Integrated Services as custodial service provider for Bangor International Airport, City Hall, and Public Health and Community Service Facilities. SJ Services was the lowest bidder, fully responsive, and stood out as well-suited for all custodial services, including Bangor International Airport, City Hall, and Public Health needs. They have substantial experience overseeing large complexes and multimillion-dollar custodial contracts, including presence at municipalities and airports in New England. Funding for these custodial services was approved in the fiscal year 2026 budget. An additional task order may be issued for wheelchair services for Bangor International Airport if the air carriers agree to proposed terms. Costs associated with wheelchair services will be a pass-through fee to participating air carriers. This item was reviewed and recommended for approval at the Finance Committee meeting on September 3rd, 2025. I move passage of Council Order 25-264. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Doubt I'd like to speak on.
Counselor Tremble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would doubt this order. I know it was a, I think a four-to-one vote probably with the Finance Committee, and that was a second discussion at the Finance Committee. And I don't have an issue with this recommendation from the staff. I mean, they did their due diligence, they looked into it. There were some issues that arose about the successful bidder, and those were, I think, were answered. My concern really is, one of the concerns was of the public health facility. We more than cut in half the hours that were allowed for them to do the job. So they got seven, I think, I think, believe it's seven hours a week they get to clean the public health. But I mean, if, I think, if you gave me seven hours a day, I probably couldn't do a satisfactory job cleaning that. And then the issue with the airport, I think some issues have arisen. It's a local company that's in the incumbent position right now. They didn't get recommended for, the difference is $40,000 over a three-year bid. I just think, common sense says, if they're paying 40, if we're paying $40,000 less, this company isn't going to make $40,000 less. The people working, the people that clean the airport are going to make $40,000 less. The people that need those jobs and are just barely above minimum wage, but they're going to make the $40,000 less, not this company. So I just have some real, I'm, I'm still just still bothered by it. I think I'd like to see it stay local and see the workers get paid a better wage out there. I'll be voting against this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Approach.
Hillary Simmons, resident of Bangor. In regards to this, I believe previously in 2005, there was a discussion in regards to this contract, and there was some belief that there were conflict of interests. And I'm wondering where we stand as far as that currently with a sitting council member now.
I'm not aware of any conflicts of interest.
I believe in 2005, someone, Counselor Hawes and myself, we have a conflict, and took this issue to court, and in court, it was ruled that there were no conflicts. I don't know what the basis of the, it was, but there was, I think it went to the court. In that case, no court.
It did go to the court, and there was a court decision that I reviewed, and the court found that there were, based on the record before them, there were no conflicts.
Okay, great. All right. Any other comments? Roll call vote?
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor? Counselor Tremble?
No.
Counselor Fornia?
Yes.
Five yes, one no.
Thank you. Order 25-264 has passage. New business.
25-279 Order authorizing the city manager to execute easement to Bangor Main 1 LLC at city-owned right-of-way at the end of Gilman Road. Counselor Dean.
Don't bother reading the whole thing.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I would make a motion to remove Order 25-279. A second.
That doesn't sound right.
I would suggest that the, the procedure would be to make a motion to postpone indefinitely that council order. And that would require a second, of course.
I will make a motion to.
About amend your motion.
I will amend my motion of removing Council Order 25-279 to postponing indefinitely Council Order 25-279.
Second.
I'm going to go back to Counselor Fish, can she second the last one?
I second the amended motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second? Any other comments? Seeing none, Order 25-279 is postponed indefinitely.
Public hearing, application for special amusement license renewal of the Maine Tavern, Inc., doing business as the Maine Tavern, Inc., 152 Main Street. Counselor Beck.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move that we open the public hearing for the application for special amusement license renewal of the Maine Tavern Incorporated, doing business as the Maine Tavern Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second? Questions, comments? Seeing none, public hearing is open.
Seeing no one approach, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second? Questions, comments? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I move passage of the application for special amusement license renewal of the Maine Tavern Incorporated, doing business as the Maine Tavern Incorporated, 152 Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second? Questions, comments? Seeing none, the amusement renewal is passed.
25-282 Order referring the issue of City Council Wayne Mallor's actions during the August 14th, 2025 Historic Preservation Commission meeting to the city's Board of Ethics for Advisory Opinion. Counselor Tremble.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Chairman, I would move passage of Order 25-282.
Second.
This would refer to the city's Board of Ethics for an advisory opinion, the issues of whether Counselor Wayne Mallor's actions during the August 14th, 2025 Historic Preservation Commission meeting constitute to one or more violations of the city's code of ethics. The city's code of ethics allows for the city council to request an advisory opinion from the Board of Ethics as to whether a particular situation constitutes a violation of the code of ethics. Upon referral of a question, the Board of Ethics may conduct fact-finding, deliberate, and issue findings in an advisory opinion with respect to the questions referred. The council requests an advisory opinion from the Board of Ethics on the following questions: whether the council Mallor violated Sections 33-13.1 B or C of the Ethics Code, and whether the council Mallor violated 33-13.1 D of the Ethics Code, particularly with respect to Title I, MRS 403, by communicating with the members of the Historic Preservation Commission expartee during the recess regarding the pending application before the commission. And three, whether council Mallor violated Section 33-1 of the Ethics Code, which requires the city council to maintain the standard of conduct that will inspire public confidence in the integrity of the city's government. And four, whether council Mallor violated any other provisions of the code of ethics. I just like to speak to this.
Go ahead.
Yeah. At the regular meeting of the city council two weeks ago, we had a number of people, I think, that spoke under the public comment and gave written testimony and oral testimony as to the occurrences of that board meeting. I think if you go back and watch the tape, you wouldn't really see a lot. But I think it was, it was the side conversations that I think it would require the Board of Ethics to, to do an investigation, interview the chairman of the board, other members of the board, and ascertain what actually happened at that meeting. But I think, based on the preponderance of the people that came forward with the issues of what occurred at that meeting, I think it behooves us to ask the Ethics Commission to investigate this.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second? Any questions, comments?
Justin Cartier, resident of Bangor. Just my comment is on the order of things here. Mr. Tremble bringing this ethics, this, to ethics after Mr. Mallor has brought the next thing on the agenda against Mr. Tremble. It's just an odd situation here where it almost seems like bickering and fighting between council members. This is exactly the kind of thing I hope we can just put behind us and move forward and work towards the city of Bangor instead of trying to slap each other with ethics violations. Thank you.
Yep.
I would just agree, I would agree with the previous speaker about the appearance of this. I would say in 15 years, it's the only time I've asked an Ethics Commission investigation. I think I may have voted on one other one, but I. I think I may have voted on one other one, but I don't, can't remember a time where I felt that somebody really needed to be looked into for a clear violation of an ethics. I wish we didn't have to bring this, but unfortunately, I think it rises to that level.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second? Let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
After, after the vote.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no.
Thank you. Order twenty-five dash two-eight-two has passage. Counselor Mallor?
I agree that we should bring this to the Ethics Committee because there is a lot of bickering going on amongst counselors. But, you know, it's the same old story, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So coming up next will be one involving Mr. Tremble, which was brought before he retaliated with the one against me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Twenty-five dash two-eight-three order referring the issue of taking and circulating nomination papers on behalf of another to the city's Board of Ethics for an advisory opinion, Counselor Mallor.
Can I just have you put your speaker on?
Yes, I've got too many things going on here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move order twenty-five dash two-eight-three order referring the, the executive summary is the order would refer to the Board of, City's Board of Ethics for an advisory opinion, the issue of whether one or more provisions of the city code of ethics is violated when a counselor takes and circulates nomination papers for another counselor. These were signed papers. The city code of ethics allows for the city council to request an advisory opinion from the Board of Ethics as to whether a particular situation constitutes a violation of the code of ethics. Upon referral of a question, the Board of Ethics may conduct facts finding, fact-finding, deliberate, and issue findings and an advisory opinion with respect to the question referred.
Thank you, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second? Questions, comments? Counselor Tremble?
Well, I doubt, we'll probably have a roll call on this as well, but just an issue of timing, one. I'm reading this, and I mean, it seems like it might be about me, but I'm not even named in this. So people are concerned that was a tit-for-tat thing. I initiated my previous order the day after we heard from that last meeting. So that would have been almost four weeks ago. I have no idea when this, I heard about this about within the last week or so, so here's what it is. I don't know when this was initiated. But as to the issue of the actual question, just, it seems like the last time, actually, it's great, the Ethics Commission's gonna be busy. They've been kind of dormant for a while, but I think it also is kind of gets silly when we just give them issues and non-issues. We've talked to the city clerk, the city attorney. If the issue is laid out here, it's perfectly fine for somebody to take somebody's papers around and give petitions, which it's been done for years. And if you read the code, there's no, it's not, this is not a gray area, it's very black and white to me. So it seems to me that we're just getting into a crazy time if we refer this to whatever the will of the council is.
Thank you. Approach.
I rise this evening to bring forward a matter that's.
Let's start from the beginning.
I rise this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, start.
Free Simmons.
Thank you. I know who you are.
So it has been brought to the citizens of Bangor that Counselor Dan Tremble had taken out nomination papers for Counselor Kerry Pelletier. While this may appear on the surface to be an act of courtesy or support, the reality is that such conduct runs directly contrary to the provisions of the Bangor City Charter and the regulations regarding, or governing the circulation of nomination papers. The city charter exists as our guiding legal framework. When a submit, when a sitting member of the council takes out nomination papers for another member, it is more than a technical violation. It represents a breach of the impartiality and integrity that our electoral system depends upon. It creates the appearance of collusion among elected officials and calls into question whether all candidates are being treated equally under the same set of rules. Equally important, this body must also hold itself to the highest ethical standards when conducting business beyond the nomination process. Conflicts of interest, whether financial, personal, or political, must be disclosed fully in the advance of any vote. The citizens of Bangor expect their counselors to be transparent and to recuse themselves when their impartiality could reasonably be questioned. Failure to do so not only violates the spirit of fair governance, but risks undermining the legitimacy of council decisions. It is the responsibility of every member here to make sure such disclosures, disclosures proactively so that the integrity of our proceedings is beyond reproach. The citizens of Bangor, Bangor rightfully expect and deserve that their elected officials will comply fully with the charter, not disregard it when it suits their political preferences. The public must be assured that every candidate's path to the ballot is fair, transparent, and free from manipulation. Counselor Tremble's actions, whether carried out knowingly or in error, established a troubling precedence that it left unaddressed, erodes public trust in this council and in the electoral process itself. We cannot allow exceptions to our governing rules. To do so diminishes the very authority of the charter and undermines the confidence our community places in its elected representatives. For these reasons, I respectfully submit that this violation must not be overlooked. It must be acknowledged, it must be corrected, and it must serve as a reminder that every member of this body is bound by the same rules as the citizens that you represent. Your duty is not only to legislate, but to hold, or but to lead by example. That begins with respecting the charter in both letter and spirit.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is still on, that's good. My name is Scott Partey, and I am a citizen of Bangor. I just want to say that the appearance of this is really kind of disturbing, to say the least. I think you should all just kind of step back and it started with Joe Leonard, who isn't here, being investigated, and now it just thinks, things are just kind of spreading. And it's a bad look for all of us, all of us that try to help the city, that sit on committees and et cetera. It just looks really bad, so take a step back, would you, guys? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else approach? Roll call vote?
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes, and I appreciate, may I say something, or do I have to just wait until?
Wait till after the vote.
Okay, yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
No.
Counselor Fornier?
No.
Or yes, two no?
Counselor Fish?
I agree with what the public is saying, and, you know, it seems like two or three weeks ago, we're all under investigation for ethics, and and now we have two ethics complaints, and I agree, it doesn't look good. I think we have passionate people on council. I think they work hard and they try to do the right thing, but whenever there's a question about ethics, I think it's good to have a third party, an ethics committee, look at it. And when we ask questions and we debate, just like you can find ten attorneys, no offense to our solicitor, but depending on what side you are, you can get a lot of different opinions. So I'm voting yes on this to to get an outside independent decision, or at least what their thoughts are on the ethics on this, and send it to ethics. So it's not that I believe either one or all of us are corrupt, but I believe it's good when there's a question to the public for it to go to ethics and have it reviewed and have them come back. So thank you, everyone, and keep the faith in us.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Thank you. I would just like to state for the record that I voted to send this to the Ethics Committee, not because I feel an impropriety has been committed, but because I feel that the Ethics Committee should determine that no impropriety has been incurred. So I just want everyone to know that I'm not in agreement with this, but I do feel that it should be looked into, and if there was an impropriety, then we'll find that out.
Could you give me a tally? Okay. Order twenty-five dash two-eight-three has passage. That brings us to the end of the meeting. Any comments from staff? Just a hand wave, goodbye, is that it? Council members, Counselor Mallor?
Good night.
Counselor Beck?
Just want to say it's gonna be an exciting time in Bangor Saturday. We got Recovery Palooza, and we also have Bangor's first multicultural fair at the library. So clear your calendars Saturday, it's gonna be a fun one.
Counselor Fish?
Good night.
Counselor Dean?
Good night, Bangor.
Counselor Tremble?
Thank you, I just want to speak to the the chair you're sitting in right now, the absence of Counselor Pelletier since we last met. I think it's, it's tragic, I think it was tragic that she felt she needed to resign rather than finish up the year on the council. I think, I think Kerry did an excellent job as council chair for almost two years. When she got elected to the council and when she was elected chair, I was, I had some concerns it would be her agenda, especially if she was going to be chair, that she had an agenda that really wasn't my agenda. But once she became chair, her agenda as chair was the city's agenda. She didn't have her own agenda when she ran the meetings. She was very fair and impartial and ran the meetings in a very respectful way for everybody. So I think it was very, very sad that she felt the need to resign. So along those lines of what we are talking about tonight, I think we really, as a city, as a group, as a council, need to decide what the tone we're gonna have is, is gonna be, whether the people that are reasonable, that want to get things done, are gonna set the tone for the council and the council chambers of malcontents, whether they be on the council, or whether they be members of the public, are gonna allow the tone of this, of these meetings to be set. I think it's, should be the former net, not the latter. I think those people are reasonable, they want to work together. I'm ready to work with those people. My days, a few on the council, I hope they're not few in Bangor. So once I'm off the council, I'm gonna continue to try to get good people to run for the city council. I don't care what party somebody, and if they're reasonable and they want to do what's right for Bangor, I'm gonna try to get those people active at the city council. And, you know, that's what I think we need to do, and I think that's what everybody, most everybody on this panel would like to see. So I'm looking forward to the next few weeks, we've got two more meetings to go, and we've still got a lot of work to do, so, good night.
Thank you. Two more meetings, then I'm here. With that, I'll say good night, Bangor, and we are adjourned.